Well, good morning and welcome to our city council meeting. We have much to cover today, so we're gonna jump in there and get this meeting started. We'll have an invocation from Pastor Jeff Gannon of Chapel Hill United Methodist. Following that, we will have a pledge of allegiance. We invite you to join us for both of those. Pastor Gannon?
Let us pray. Oh God of us all, we give thanks and praise for the gift and beauty of this day that you have made. We pray that you would help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. We give thanks for these are public servants who are willing to service. We pray that you would bless them with wisdom. We pray that you would bless this community, that we might live out the mission. So come and be with us in ways that would surprise us, in ways that would remind us that we are always and everywhere yours. We offer this prayer in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Gannon, appreciate you being here. We have the approval of the minutes of the September 24th, 2019 meeting. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I move that those meeting minutes be approved.
Second.
A motion in the second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. And motion passes unanimously. I have three proclamations. Our first proclamation this morning is for the Big Read. If we could have Julie Sherwood and Cynthia Berner-Harris join me. Good morning. Good to have you. So, I have a proclamation from the city of Wichita. Whereas reading is vital to one's life and livelihood, and the habit of regular reading raises one's likelihood of academic and economic success, as well as stirs one's social and civic sense. Whereas the citizens of a community that all experience the same book have the unique opportunity to share their ideas and forge new understandings, and whereas, the Big Read was created to restore reading to the center of the American culture. And whereas the Wichita Public Library and its partners across the region encourage all citizens to read, discuss, and celebrate Lab Girl by Hope Jerran during the NEA Big Read Wichita. Now therefore be it resolved that I Jeff Longwell, the mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby proclaim October 29th as the NEA Big Read Wichita Month in the city of Wichita, and urge all citizens to read Lab Girl and take part in the programs and events offered throughout the area. And we'll let you have the podium. We'll let you have the proclamation.
Thank you Mayor Longwell. The NEA Big Read is an initiative of the National Endowment for the Arts in partnership with Arts Midwest that broadens our understanding of our world, our communities, and ourselves through the joy of sharing a good book. The NEA Big Read Wichita encourages widespread community involvement through an array of programming designed to meet diverse audiences. The Wichita Public Library received one of seventy-five grants in the country for the 2019 NEA Big Read Wichita. This year, we're reading Lab Girl by Hope Jerran and are partnering with more than thirty community organizations in and around Wichita to discuss and explore this science-based title. We thank the city of Wichita for recognizing the importance of literacy in the community. For more information about the NEA Big Read Wichita, including a schedule of upcoming events, visit www.bigreadwichita.org. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is for Chiropractic Health Month. If Dr. Brian Asbury will join us, and anyone else you'd like to bring up, doctor? Good to have you this morning. So our proclamation from the city of Wichita. Whereas with the increase in chronic pain, there's been a simultaneous rise in opioid use, which has been associated with adverse outcomes, including addiction, overdose, and insufficient pain relief. Leading the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, to classify the overuse and abuse of prescription pain medications in the United States is epidemic. Whereas prescription drugs that numb pain may convince a patient that a musculoskeletal condition is less severe than it is, or that it has healed, this misunderstanding can lead to overexertion and a delay in the healing process, or even permanent injury. And whereas the CDC guideline for prescribing opioids for chronic pain and National Pain Strategy both share an important tactic to address the US opioid epidemic. Encouraging medical doctors to utilize non-pharmacologic conservative care and to consider non-addictive alternative options, behavioral challenges, and non-addictive pain relievers. Whereas the Kansas doctors of chiropractic are physician-level providers who focus on the whole person and their conservative approach to healthcare and pain management, and have particular expertise in the prevention, care, and rehabilitation of disorders of musculoskeletal system and the nervous system, and the effects of this disorder on general health. And whereas National Chiropractic Health Month 2019 serves as reminder to all citizens that conservative treatments for pain, such as chiropractic services, may potentially lessen or eliminate the need for riskier, potentially addictive treatments, such as prescription opioid pain medication. It should be thoroughly exhausted whenever possible before initiating opioid therapy. Now therefore be it resolved that I Jeff Longwell, the mayor of the city, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby join with the Kansas Chiropractic Association in proclaiming October of 2019 as Chiropractic Health Month, and urge all citizens to learn more about the conservative approach to pain management and recognize doctors of chiropractic for their continuing efforts on behalf of all of Kansas. And Dr. Asbury, I'm gonna let you have the podium.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for joining cities across the nation in proclaiming October as Chiropractic Health Month, right here in Wichita. Doctors of chiropractic are musculoskeletal pain experts. Recent research, as well as statements by other members of the medical community, have reiterated the importance of a conservative-first approach to pain. Amid rising healthcare costs and the opioid epidemic, chiropractic is a vital part of this approach. The Kansas Chiropractic Association wishes you good health and reminds Wichitaans to get adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last proclamation this morning is for Marsha and Michael Potvin. Are they here this morning? Good morning. And it's Sock-a-Tum Work Day. Good to have you this morning. Proclamation from the city. Whereas the Sock-a-Tum Sock Campaign began in Denver in 2012 and has spread to cities throughout the United States, including Wichita, Kansas. Whereas socks are the number-one clothing need for those who experience homelessness, for socks were out faster than any other article of clothing, and are rarely donated. Whereas the lack of warm socks sends more homeless people to the emergency room than any other reason. Whereas the Sock-a-Tum Sock Campaign encourages our citizens to forego wearing socks as a show of solidarity for those experiencing homelessness and to recognize the great need for warm socks. Now therefore be it resolved that I Jeff Longwell, mayor of the city, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby proclaim December 4th as Sock-a-Tum Work Day in the city of Wichita, Kansas, and encourage all of our citizens to leave their socks at home on December 4th of 2019 and donate new socks for those experiencing homelessness. And we'll let you share some remarks.
Thank you, by the way. I just wanna tell you all that, you know, socks seem like such a little thing, but it's such a huge thing in our city even. Socks, like he said, socks are the number-one requested item of clothing at homeless shelters and, you know, places that the homeless people can go to eat and that kinda thing. And they're the least donated, and it's such a simple thing to go to Walmart and buy a package of socks. But the other thing that he didn't address, that I think is extremely important here in Wichita, is that we have forty, excuse me, forty-nine Title I schools in Wichita. And what that means is, is that the majority of the students that attend there, their families are at or below poverty level. Now these kids come to school with no socks. They go trudging through the snow to go to school with no socks, or maybe their socks have holes in them and they have blisters on their feet. So my goal personally is to put a sock drawer in every one of these schools, forty-nine schools, a sock drawer in every school, so then when a child comes to school with no socks on and he's cold and his feet have blisters on him, that he can actually go and pick out a pair of socks for himself to wear. So that's my goal here in Wichita. I hope that we can get businesses on board to ask their employees to come to work with no socks, or maybe even have a crazy sock day. And that's what we're after, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. So we have an award this morning. If Melinda Walker will join me. It's a procurement award. What was that show? I'm the real Melinda Walker. Oh, she's not here, I thought. Thought we were gonna do that. Which one of you are the real Melinda Walker?
I'll substitute today.
We have a special award that our purchasing receives for National Award for Excellence. The purchasing division of the Department of Finance has been awarded the 24th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for 2019 from the National Procurement Institute. This prestigious award is earned by those organizations that demonstrate excellence in procurement. For 2019, the city of Wichita was one of two-hundred-and-two successful applicants in one of only sixty-seven cities in the United States. The city is one of only three agencies in Kansas to win this award. This award is based on evaluation of the purchasing division using a set of standardized criteria. The evaluation process is designed to measure state-of-the-art best practices, innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership attributes of the procurement function. This award demonstrates the city's professional purchasing staff's approach of efficient purchasing methods and best practices in the field of public procurement. Purchasing staff continues to improve performance outcomes and procurement functions to better serve their customers. As a reflection of this, the purchasing division has received this award for eighteen years. Congratulations to the Department of Financing's purchasing staff for their hard work and their dedication to excellence in procurement, and, this is heavy, who would like to accept this? Thank you. I'll let you share then.
I just wanna say thank you on behalf of the purchasing staff and myself. We strive to record for this award by serving our customers, both internally and externally. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, you wanna call the next item, please?
Steve Leoni, Trash Problems in Wichita.
Is Steve Leoni here? No Steve Leoni, we'll go to the next.
Steve Skorup, Concerned About Comments Made At The WSG Public Forum Power Hour.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Steve Skorup. I live at 1421 North Spruce Avenue in Wichita. I've lived there approximately six months, so I'm not in the, probably not close to be in the geographic center of Councilman Johnson's district, but I am pretty much democratically in the center of it. And I was a former student at Wichita State, and I happened to be on campus. I used the library to check my emails, and I saw the, in the sidewalk chalk, the announcement about the empowerment hour, which I thought was okay, interesting. So I saw a flyer about it, and I decided to attend it, just to see what I was going to hear. And it was straight out of Adam Schiff and Maxine Waters playbook, exactly what I expected. A lot of gullible eighteen- and nineteen-year-olds who believe that this country is terrible. And Mr. Johnson was about the fifth or sixth speaker that I listened to that more, particular morning. I thought things he said were inappropriate, and I thought his comments about Mike Pompeo were especially inappropriate. Mr. Pompeo is not running for anything at the present time. He's presently the Secretary of State, the United States government. And what Adam Schiff and Maxine Waters are trying to accomplish is a coup against the United, a duly-elected President of the United States. And I don't think that's a proper forum for this, I never expected that, to see that in the middle of Kansas. I'm from Southern California. I've lived in Wichita almost four years, and I spent fifty-plus years in Southern California. I know what it's like to be a minority, 'cause in California, it's gone from being the golden state to being the brown state. I can go all day in Southern California and not hear a word of English unless I speak to my landlord. Wichita, I expected it to be more moderate. I was very unduly upset by what I heard. You had the Hispanic girl in the wheelchair who talked about how proud she was of being able to come out of the closet because she was no longer, because of DACA. And you had the little black gal that walked up there, that tried to make Michael Brown poor. All she needed was her Colin Kaepernick cops-or-pigs socks and her Black Lives Matter t-shirt to complete the ensemble. It was just totally inappropriate, un-American. I'm rambling, I'm not a public speaker. I hate public speaking. I haven't attended a city council meeting in more than thirty years, and I hated my public speaking class in college. But this is something that needs to be addressed, because what the Democrats are proposing right now is a coup against a duly-elected President of the United States. And I don't think that's a proper situation this country needs to be in. This is a duly-elected president, and if they wanna beat him, they need to beat him at the ballot box, not try to overthrow his government. And I didn't appreciate the comments Mr. Johnson made, and I certainly didn't appreciate the comments that other speakers made. I listened to about forty-five minutes of that, and then I had to leave because I was so visibly upset in my own mind, I knew that I had to get out of there, or I was gonna say something inappropriate. The day after President Trump was elected, there was a large rally behind Elliot Hall on campus at Wichita State, and it was just how terrible they thought Donald Trump was gonna be. And it was, Mr. Johnson, I don't know if Mr. Johnson was there or not, I don't know. I know there was a large group of people. That particular empowerment hour, there were four white people there, three women from the Legal Women Voters and myself. Other than that, it was all minorities, which was what they were encouraging. But it just, I'm sorry, it just infuriates me. I just, I don't know what else to say, except I'm very upset about what's going on in this country right now, and I'm going to be a vocal spokesman for not overthrowing this government. And I'm gonna do everything I possibly can to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you very much for your time.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you Mayor. Steve, just to respond to you, since you took the time to come up here. First, I appreciate you taking the time to come address the council with your concerns, expressing your First Amendment rights. Greatly appreciate it. But one thing I do wanna share with you, and I won't, while I'm up here at the bench, I have a policy that I just don't speak those names, so you spoke the name. But what I said there, in that event, was about empowering other people to get out and vote. And it was minority sororities that actually called that event together, so there were gonna be a lot of people of color at that. And the goal is to get more people of color engaged. In regard to my remarks, I don't feel that they were in the way that you perceived. What I did say was that I encourage any and all elected officials and candidates to get out and talk to the people that they wanna represent. That means every part of their district, every person, even the folks that they disagree with. That was the majority of my comments. I brought up an example, the one you gave, of when that did not happen, because there's parts of District One and lower-income communities that never saw representation. And that was what I highlighted. And I hold every elected official to that same standard, every candidate, to get out and talk to people of color, people they agree with, people they disagree with, get as many ideas as possible, and try to work together. And that's something I'm gonna continue to push and support. I hold myself to that same standard. And if you wanna talk more about this, 'cause I know you are upset, I'm happy to go get coffee with you. I'll pay for it, so you don't have to, and we can continue this conversation. But as far as everything else, overthrowing government, none of that was said by me, none of that was said by the speakers, that wasn't the intent. The intent is to get people out to vote, because everyone should exercise their right to vote. And I hope that you continue to do so as well. If you'd like, the council offices up front, you can talk to Lynn, she can schedule a coffee for us, we can continue this conversation. But I appreciate you coming and expressing your opinion. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda items one through fifteen.
Any items that need to be pulled for clarification or discussion? Seeing none, I move we approve consent agenda items one through fifteen.
Second.
A motion in the second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Reported Board of Bids and Contracts.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Hannah Lane, Department of Finance, today I present to you the September 30th Board of Bids recommendations. First engineering bid we have is 2019 Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Phase Eight. Recommendation is Amigo excavation and plumbing for $77,424.12. Paving and waterline improvements on Waco Avenue. Recommendation is to reject all bids. Mobile printers and hardware. Recommendation is to defer to October 7th Board of Bids date. Paper products, toilet tissue, paper towels. Recommendation is Lafayette T. Williams and Associates Groups 1 and 6 for a total of Masco Incorporated for Groups 2, 3, and 5 for $8,729. Southwest Paper Company Groups 4 and 8, $27,545.50. Vertiv Operating Company Group 7, $3,862. Dansco Business Solutions Group 9, $1,055.94. Orchard Park Recreation Center Flooring. Recommendation is to defer to October 7th Board of Bids. Medium voltage infrastructure improvements defer to October 14th Board of Bids. Chemical rehabilitation of wells. Recommendation is Charles Sargent Irrigation Secondary Contract for $250,000. Repair and replace tracks and undercarriage for Caterpillar Bulldozer. Recommendation is Foley Equipment for $101,980.37. That's all the bids. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Anyone have any questions on the award of bids? Seeing none, I would move that we approve the awards as mentioned.
Second.
A motion in the second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor, did we approve the Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids? I wasn't sure if that was included in her report or not.
It was all part of that.
Okay. Patio space use agreement at Nafsker Park.
Morning Mayor, members of the council. Today I wanna talk about a space agreement, excuse me, patio space agreement at Nafsker Park. This item had been to the council previously. As you know, the master plan for Nafsker Park had anticipated some commercial use on the eastern edge of the park to help energize the park and to encourage multiple uses. As part of that planning, we had anticipated that we'd have outdoor dining. When we brought this issue to you originally, there was some concern about the fact that it was in the form of a lease agreement. We have worked with Douglas Development LLC and have negotiated a use agreement, which is probably a little more consistent with what's been done in the past, both for parkland and for sidewalk cafes. A reminder that in the past, there have been a number of park use agreements that have been approved by the park board. That includes First Tee at McDonald Golf Course, as well as the other items that are listed there, and those are commercial uses on park ground. Also wanna remind you that we have a number of sidewalk cafes that have been permitted by the city throughout the downtown and other parts of the city. This is a depiction of the Ambassador Hotel Sidewalk Cafe utilizes public space. Permit is, was received by the ambassador for this use. You'll see here, which will be pertinent in a minute, that this sidewalk cafe uses planters as well as fencing. Recently opened Starbucks downtown also has two seating areas that are fenced off and are on public property. And then Hoppy Gnome is a little more of a minimal use of the space. Normally during business hours, they have seating out there. Those are just some examples. Back in April, the Design Council reviewed the seating plan for Nafsker Park, and as you can see on the eastern edge, it was anticipated that there would be cafe seating throughout the park, adjacent to all of the development. The other dots that you see, for instance, the green dots are movable tables and chairs in the park. There's also seating on the west edge that would accommodate not just normal pedestrian use, and park user use, but also relates to the food trucks that would be parked occasionally on the west side. Under the newly-negotiated use agreement, the developer would have a permit for the use of 765 square feet of space. This compares to a little over 2,200 square feet that was originally in the lease agreement that was in front of the council. This is a little more detailed site plan. That area is shown on the left-hand side, in the gray area that where you say, see the words "C enlargement." And then the actual seating arrangement and planter arrangement is shown on the right-hand side. Each of the gray, excuse me, green boxes in the gray area show the anticipated spots for the use of planters. Planters will look something like this, actually probably a little, not as quite as tall, so that the people that are in the caf, or in the restaurant can look over the planters and into the park, to allow the area to be better integrated. Here's another look of how these would work. Unlike the original proposal, there would be no fencing. These planters would have spaces between them, if I remember right, in many cases, three feet between them, and then where they're closer on this diagram, I believe, they're about one foot between the planters. The developer would be responsible for the construction of the planters and the removal at the time that the use agreement expires. The agreement is for three years with two annual renewals. The developer would pay a user fee of $2,000, which would be earmarked for ongoing maintenance of the park, and the area can only be used for restaurant use, which includes the consumption of food, alcohol, and non-alcoholic beverages. With that, excuse me, I did wanna mention that this was reviewed by With that, excuse me, I did want to mention that this was reviewed by the park board on September twenty-fifth and was approved by the board. With that, I recommend that the council ratify the park board's approval of this agreement and that we execute the agreement. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Bob, will you clarify for me again? You did state that the public will be able to use this space when the hours of operation are not in session?
That is correct. They do not have exclusive use of the property when they're not, when it's not in operation.
Okay. So you don't, so when they are in operation, do you have to be purchasing something from them to sit there?
I'm not quite sure of how, I don't remember if the use agreement specifically says that. But that is the, under all of our agreements, that we do grant them the use. It's not an exclusive use. We looked at that language and we did not include that in this agreement. So in theory, someone else could be there during their hours of operation. But that's not the intent.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item?
Dear Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Jason Gregory with Downtown Wichita, 507 East Douglas, for the record. I wanted to speak in favor of this use agreement for the cafe seating in Nafsker Park today, that is before you today. As you all know, the Greater Spaghetti Works in Nafsker Park site was identified as a catalyst site in the project downtown master planning effort. And it spoke significantly to the importance of this park as a key node along Douglas and the critical link between Old Town and Intrus Bank Arena. From the beginning conversations of the redesign of the park, we understood the important role that the eastern edge of this park would have with the ground floor retail and restaurant uses that would play in activating the park edge. Having restaurants with outdoor cafe seating is a built-in activator, and they add to the energy and vitality to the park that we desire in this signature space. The city has a long precedent of allowing cafe seating in the public right-of-way with very, with many very successful examples of outdoor dining throughout downtown, Old Town, and the Douglas Design District. We see this use agreement acting in the same spirit of the existing permitting process. Another great example of public-private partnerships that add to the overall success of this new park. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Donna Worth. I live in zip code six, seven, two, one, five. I want to thank you all for eliminating the fencing. That was one of my major concerns. Planters are definitely a plus. However, I, as a citizen, if I enter that park, I will want to enter those enclosures. Will I enter those enclosures through the business and then come out into the surrounding area to eat my brown bag lunch, which I bring? Or is there a way for me to enter those enclosures from within the park? And when I do enter those enclosures with my brown bag lunch, will I be asked to leave because that business is leasing the facilities? Now, I am not against the concept of outside dining, don't get me wrong. I'm against the concept of how this all went down. The designs had, up until just recently, tables for the public. And that's exactly how they were presented at every presentation that I attended. And all of a sudden, the public is now informed that we're leasing space to a business. I just want my rights as a public citizen and the rights of any other citizen, including the homeless, by the way. When they come to that park, I want them to be able to enter, sit down, and utilize that park and not have to pay a business for sitting inside a closure. The procedures that this city goes through on projects seems to ignore the public until the very last minute, and then surprises are dropped on us. That is what I'm up here to tell you I'm mad about. We can't go on and do projects without the public's involvement. We can't go on and do projects without giving them the full information to begin with. And I, as a citizen, will be testing this concept. I will be bringing friends and brown bag lunches to this park. And I will be expecting to sit within those enclosures. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor.
Bob, real quick, can you speak to, are there any other tables and chairs that are going to be in Nafsker Park?
Councilmember Johnson, Mayor, yes, there are. If I could have the PowerPoint back. The information that was shared with the Design Council earlier this year shows the seating plan. And so we're expecting to have cafe seating along that entire east edge, as well as you can see movable seating. This is where, but they probably will be placed initially. But again, because they are movable, they can be put anywhere. We also have swivel chairs that you'll see are primarily, if I remember right, in two locations about center. Actually, I think they have some up north as well, and then south by the dog park. And then we have benches throughout the park.
And will there be any fees charged for anybody to use those?
No.
Councilmember Tuttle, did you have?
I was going to ask the same question.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Next speaker. We'll go one at a time. So one speaker at a time.
All right. I'm going to do the talking. He's just, he's my bodyguard, just in case. Well, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. My name is Darryl Kelly in eighteen nineteen South Red Oak, six, seven, two, zero, seven, for the record. And I'm here on behalf of W.
My name is Robyn. I'm Art. I'm also on here behalf of W.
So we are here today, I have a prepared statement from the W Board. We are here today to represent the Board of Trustees. W's mission is to attract, retain, engage diverse young talent to effect positive change for a brighter future. Today, the City Council is considering whether or not to approve the use agreement for Douglas Development LLC, allowing them to use the park space at Nafsker Park for patio seating. We are here today to express our support for this use agreement. Currently, Nafsker Park is ongoing renovation and transformation into a world-class space in the heart of Wichita. We believe that having an organization like Douglas Development LLC, activating the park by providing Wichitaans an experience for downtown dining in our city's newest park is vital to the community to attract young talent. We stand before you today expressing W Board of Trustees' support for the use agreement between the city and the Douglas Development LLC. Thank you so much for your time today. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me today. Eddie Fana Stock, two oh one North Water Street, for the record. I was going to prepare a statement, but I think winging it is a little bit more fun. So as you know, last Wednesday, the park board had a special meeting regarding this, and it was unanimously approved. We had some concerns when it was initially a lease agreement. We met with the development team and the tenant and came to a solution that we feel would benefit everybody involved with the community being at the forefront of that. So the first thing that we kind of had an issue with was the fencing. So we decided to look at alternative barriers with that, natural barriers, planters, as you saw. We were pleased with that. And, you know, I think everybody's ultimate goal is to activate this park. You know, we invested quite a bit of time and money into this park, and we want to ultimately revitalize it. So I think this will, this will do that, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none? Any other speakers?
Morning, Mayor, Council. John Rolfe, President and CEO of Thrive Restaurant Group, eighteen seventy-seven North Rock Road, Wichita, Kansas, the Wichita, Kansas, six, seven, two, oh, six. So we are the business is that are signed up to come into Nafsker Park. And just wanted to give you a little background on our choice and why we wanted to do that. We love this city. It's been our hometown since our founding in the early seventies and have run restaurants in this town since the mid-eighties. And we're so excited about what's going on downtown. And we birthed Homegrown here a couple of years ago out west, built one east. And while we were looking for our east location, we started looking downtown. We thought we'd go there next. We were looking at three different locations downtown, got really excited about what was going on in Nafsker Park, the vision for that, as we think about how we continue to transform our city into something that is attractive to living here and attracting talent here. The vision that you all have thought up and the courage that you've showed for this park was inspiring to us as a business. And so we made the choice, first time we've ever done an urban restaurant. It's got me nervous not to have a parking lot out front, I'll be honest with you. But I love the vision of having this public space that is energized by commerce alongside, where food trucks can come up along the other, and that people can literally enjoy a meal or a beverage in the sunshine while they're watching their friends or their kids play and enjoy things. We got so caught up in the vision for Nafsker Park that we also decided to launch our newest concept, which is called Peace, Love, and Pie in the same space. And so we're taking a space right next to Homegrown to put this premium dessert pie concept in, again, with the thought of helping activate the park. So we'll be open at six-thirty in the morning, bringing energy to the park there right on the front end of the day. And then the pie will be open well into the evening, you know, till, you know, ten or eleven o'clock. Just helping bring life and energy and just being a part of the city. So we're thrilled about it, thrilled about where it's going, really appreciate the process. Councilman Johnson helped lead it, just making sure that this fit well. It's our goal to be a partner in this park, to help see it thrive. And I don't know, it's going to be really fun moving forward. So thank you all for your leadership and what you're doing. And you have my word, we will continue to do our best to just make it a wonderful attribute for this city. Thank you very much. Any questions for me?
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. We have no pie samples. Could you just explain briefly kind of why that, the planters are necessary to define that area?
Yeah, so when we first started conversations with the city on this, there was some conversation about common consumption in the park. And so we have a liquor license with Homegrown, not with Peace, Love, and Pie. So Peace, Love, and Pie, there's no need for any barrier out front, right? You can enjoy pie shake or pie fries or, or we're calling them crookies, crust cookies with fruity pebble milk inside. Anyway, something to get excited about. But with Homegrown, we have a liquor license. We sell mimosas and we sell Bloody Marys. And so with that, when, when the city decides not at this time to pursue common consumption, then you have to create some kind of restrictive barrier by state law that, that shows people that they're not intended to take an alcoholic beverage from where you're serving it into the park. And so we're just following, you know, we hold sixty-one liquor license across ten states. And so we take it very seriously and just want to make sure that we're abiding by the law. And so that's really the reason of it. But I think, you know, with what we've come up with, we can do low profile as something that really blends in well with the park and hopefully adds to the aesthetic, doesn't take away from it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tuttle.
John, thank you for being here today. I appreciate your investment in Wichita. Just a quick question to address Ms. Worth's comments. If we did have community members who went to the area with their brown bag lunch, how would that be addressed? And how will your staff be trained to make sure that it's a respectful dialogue?
Well, you know, we always, so our, our brand theme, when you go into every restaurant, is cultivating kindness. And so we try and see every opportunity we have to try and bring a little more kindness and light and love and joy into the world. So always train our staff to handle things that way. Now, my understanding from the use agreement is while we're in business, and these will be tables and chairs that we will have paid for, not, not the city or not the park, that while we're in business, that, you know, those tables will be seated through our host stand and a normal course of business so that we can operate in a consistent way. Now, once we're done and we're closed, that's free and open to the public, even though there are tables and chairs. As long as they're not walking away in the middle of the night, we have no problem leaving them out there and letting anybody who wants to use them, use them, kind of is our part of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
No other questions? Thanks, John.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other speakers? Going once, going twice, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. And Councilmember, discussion? Seeing none, well, Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank everyone involved for the pause that we took on this to make sure we got it right. I know it was a little frustrating in the beginning for not only the development team, but for the park board, community members. But we took the necessary time to have a good dialogue, to come up with a compromise that works. So again, just want to thank all the parties involved.
Thank you. And we'll turn it over to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echoing Councilmember Frye, definitely thank you to everybody involved, all the teams, city staff, folks who came together to talk about this and again, come up with what I believe is a good compromise to help us achieve our goal of activating the park. So with that, I would move that we take the staff recommended action and ratify the proposed use agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
We have a motion. I'll second that. Is there any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public hearing and tax exemption request Open Road Brands.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Tim Goodpast, here with the City's Office of Economic Development, for the record. The item before you today is a request for an economic development tax exemption for Open Road Brands. Open Road Brands was founded in two thousand and nine. It designs and distributes decorative retail items both nationally and internationally. Its customers include Walmart, Bass Pro Shop, Cabela's, Hobby Lobby, Menards, and Home Depot, among others. Its corporate headquarters is located at fourteen twenty-five East Douglas, which is near Douglas and Hydraulic here in Wichita. These are just some examples of some of the products that the company distributes. On the left here, you can see a series of Star Wars-related products. On the right, you can see some superhero-related products. Again, on the left, you can see Coca-Cola products. On the right, various automotive products. And these are some images of their display area in their corporate headquarters at fourteen twenty-five East Douglas. On the right, you can see on the wall there a variety of university-related products that the company distributes. Currently, the company licenses with these various brands, be it Coca-Cola, or Ford, or Chevrolet, or Marvel Comics. And they design and engineer products, that they send those designs to China and have those products manufactured in China and shipped directly to their customers. Due to the recent tariffs that have been imposed on products coming in from China, it has been increasingly more expensive to import those products. Therefore, the company has determined that it would be more cost-effective to manufacture those products in the United States themselves and has been looking at both the Kansas City and Wichita markets for a location to provide a manufacturing facility. They currently have under contract land at Fortieth and Webb Road here in Wichita, where they intend to build a sixty thousand square foot manufacturing facility, subject to approval of this property tax abatement. Their investment in the real property improvements would be approximately five point three million. In addition, they would be investing two point three million in new machinery and equipment for a total investment of seven point six million dollars in Wichita. This aerial here shows Webb Road bisecting the aerial. You can see Thirty-seventh Street along the bottom of the aerial and Jabara Airport on the east side of Webb Road. The area out The area outlined in red, just north of 40th Street and west of Webb Road is the ground that they have under contract where they would build their new facility and they would have additional ground to develop later on as may be required for an expansion. The company currently has 27 employees and projects it will add at least 30 new employees for a total of 60 employees at the five-year mark. The new jobs would be at or above $45,500 a year in annual wages. Therefore, the company qualifies for a 100% property tax abatement on a five-plus-five-year basis. Looking at the $5.3 million that they look at investing in real property improvements and assuming that the Central County Appraiser appraises that at 80% of the capital investment, since we rarely see a dollar-for-dollar increase in value, the total tax abatement is estimated to be approximately $99,000 a year, of which the city's abatement would be $25,500 estimated per year. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by Wichita State University, which shows an overall ratio of benefits to costs of 1.50 to 1 for the city overall, 1.38 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 1.78 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance granting Open Road Brands LLC a 100% tax exemption on the identified real property improvements for a five-year term, plus a 100% tax exemption for a second five-year term, subject to city council review and authorize the necessary signatures. Joe Hayes, who is the owner and president of Open Road Brands is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions at this point? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. And we'll turn this over to councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity on Friday to tour Open Roads. It's a fantastic facility. We really, it's a true asset to our city, but then also the fact that we're gonna more than double the number of employees. So I will enthusiastically make a recommendation for a motion for recommend that the city council close the public hearing, approve the first reading of the ordinance granting Open Road Brands LLC a 100% tax exemption on the identified real property improvements for a five-year term, plus 100% tax exemption for the second five-year term, subject to city council review and authorize the necessary signatures.
And I'll second that and appreciate your remarks and just echo that we love the investment in Wichita. We appreciate companies that believe in Wichita and this is another great example of diversifying our local economy with a wide range of different opportunities, different job sectors. And so thank you to the group that's doing this investment and familiar with the Hayes family. I know they have invested in Wichita in the past, so they'll continue to invest heavily in a, in a city that they call home. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Sale of city-owned property at 150 North McLean.
Good morning, Mayor and members of City Council. The item for you today is a sale of a remit of city-owned property here at the location 150 North McLean. This is part of the redevelopment project that was a partnership between the city of Wichita as well as River Vista Development. So it included both the development of the River Vista project as well as all of the riverbank improvements and the improvements along Delano Park. With that, the wall that was separating the riverbank improvements and the redevelopment project was curvilinear. It's also retaining a wall, but it was not a straight line and with that, it meandered around. On the south end of this project is the land we're talking about today, near the kind of southeast corner there where you can see the chairs and the kind of jagged routed area there. So with that, kind of recapping, this was that public-private partnership and included all of that work, but that development included some improvements that actually occurred on what was going to be considered an easement. Because of that wall, it was a lot easier at the end of the project to come through and draft an easement for where the wall encroached onto the city property, where the wall encroached from the city side onto the redevelopment. But due to some liability considerations on that south end where there are also some physical improvements on that, it was recommended that the city sell that, that small area on the south end, approximately 2,500 square feet, to the development to take any fee simple liabilities out of that. With that, the owner of the development, or representatives from the development are here as well, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions at this point? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench and turn it over to councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark, for identifying this and explaining it. So I'm gonna move that the city council approve the real estate purchase agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Assignment and amendment of lease of retail space at Block 1 Garage 360 East William.
John Philbrick, Real Estate Administrator. The item before you deals with the assignment of the lease at the Block 1 Garage and then the amendment of the lease terms. In 2011, the city council approved a project to redevelop Block 1 and that included the redevelopment of the Ambassador Hotel, the Henry's Building, and then the city was to construct 263 space parking garage. The parking garage had 8,600 square feet of retail area and the retail area was to be leased to a master tenant. This is a picture of the retail space that exists now. Master tenant, the retail lease called for the city to fund all tenant improvements, which included walls, HVAC, electrical systems, and so on. And then the master tenant would take over the lease and operate the space. First five years were rent-free, then the years six through 15, rent was to be $21,000 per year. Years 16 through 20, rent was to be $63,000 per year, and then there was a purchase option at the end of the lease. The tenant was responsible for all taxes, utilities, maintenance, and other operating costs during the term of the lease. The space was taken over in 2013. At that time, approximately half of the retail space had been built out. The market at the time was, was not strong and it continued to weaken. The state vacated the state office building in 15. Some other development in the area has not occurred. The tenant operated the space for the first five years, paying all expenses and trying to find tenants. They did find two tenants, one in 2014, and then they found a second one in 2018. The first tenant can vacate very soon, I think possibly this month. Both of these leases are at low rates. They were just trying to get tenants into the building. When it came time for rent to start being paid, we started looking at options because as I noted, only half of the space had been built out by the city. And we've been discussing with the tenant possible options, and the tenant has found another party that will take over the lease. And as part of the takeover, the city will be released from any future costs for build-out. The lease will be restructured to have four years of free rent, starting upon approval. Then there will be rent at $10,000 per year for 10 years and rent at $20,000 per year for the next five, with the 20-year lease being reset to approval date. And then there's a $400,000 purchase option at the end of the lease. Again, the tenant is responsible for all taxes and costs of operation during the lease term. It's recommended that the city council approve the lease amendment and the assignment and authorize the mayor to sign all the necessary documents. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions at this point? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Claycomb?
Sorry, John, just let you get set down there. Could you just explain why the change from the original lease to the amended lease? Because it looks like it's a little less money.
Well, there's less money from the tenant. There's also less money to be paid by the city. Right now, half the space is raw. And so there's several hundred thousand dollars of expenditure that'll be required to bring the space up to the level that the original lease required the city to turn it over. And so...
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Would you consider that a market rent? Because that seems pretty cheap if we're saying that the actual value of the building's $400,000. So I would think normally with rent, you'd look at actual value and the monthly rent should be about 1% of that.
Well, you've got two factors in here. The, we're getting $400,000 at the buyout.
So that's for sure then? The buyout's for sure?
That's, that's the option in the lease, yes. It's a fixed number, if they exercise their option at the end of the 20 years. And the tenant will have a significant expenditure that they have to make to bring the space up to be leasable. And so the 400,000 is a negotiated number worked on, you know, based on what the future expend, or the current expenditure required by the new tenant would be, plus rents that they expect to achieve. Because currently, the two current leases are at very low rates. I mean, the two current leases are like, I think, $4 per square foot triple net and $6 per square foot.
So they're just not, it's just not competitive down there then?
There's very, very little demand.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, we'll turn this over to councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we take the staff recommended action.
Second, we have a motion to take the staff recommended action and a second, any other discussion? Cast your vote.
Councilmember Belibow, would you cast your vote, please?
The motion passes 6-1. Madam Clerk, next item?
Proposed 2020 outsourced pavement preservation program, including 2020 City Connecting Link Improvement Program project.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Alan King, Director of Public Works and Utilities. For some time now, the city has changed its approach on its road maintenance. This is the outsourced portion of our maintenance that we do on our road network. And we went from a more traditional approach, which was looking at condition and doing the worst first. And the kind of treatment that we used to do is basically rebuild or completely rehabilitate a road. What we've done instead now is looked at alternatives to this more traditional approach based on a return on investment, on the dollars that we invest in it. And so, starting in 2013, we did quite a few pilot projects to test various treatments and to see how long-lived they were. With the 2014 and 15 years, mostly dealing with thermal crack repairs, those long cracks that go across the road curb to curb in the neighborhoods, and 2016 and 17, the same sort of repairs on our arterial thermal crack, repairs on arterial roads. And then in 18 and 20, what we've been doing is, after we've kind of looked at that low-hanging fruit, we've been looking at the other sorts of treatments that are the highest, have the highest return on investment. Looking at the way that our street assets degrade over time, there are some treatments that make sense early on in the life of an asset when it's in pretty good condition, and then some treatments that are really more appropriate when it gets, the condition gets worse. The more expensive treatments are at the end, are towards the end of the life of an asset. For example, reconstruction at $35 a square yard. That was the more traditional approach that we were looking at, worst first. And since then, what we've looked at is employing some of these less expensive treatments earlier in the life of an asset. The idea being that even if you had a shorter amount of life that you, that you add to an asset with some of these less expensive treatments, you could do them over and over and have a higher return on investment than a more expensive, once-only kind of a repair. And this is the sort of thinking that we went into, looking at how we could evaluate these various treatments. This was a, this was a departure from the way that we had been doing things, and it comes out of the direction from the city manager and the council to look for alternatives to, to address the objective, which is to build dependable infrastructure. And so this was an approach that we took to take the, the dollars that were budgeted and to get the highest value out of those dollars. So what we're talking about here in the 2020 outsourced pavement preservation program is a funding level of $10.8 million from the CIP and $300,000 from the state. When you look at the history of, of the funding amounts, in 2009 through 2013, we were at $6.5 million a year. We bumped it back up to $8.5 million in 2014, bumped it up again in 2019 at $9.5, and that brings us to our current amount, which is $10.5. This reflects the seriousness with which the, the council, the manager and the council have been looking at this program and funding it to make a significant investment in our infrastructure, because we're, we seem to be seeing some really good results with the approach that we're taking. There's a continued emphasis on a high return on investment preventive and preservative maintenance. That continues to be the approach that we take. We're no longer doing any standalone thermal crack repairs. We pretty much took care of those. We're continuing pilot placement of failed brick crosswalks so that as crosswalks fail, we're using stamped colored concrete. They look, they look almost identical and they wear a lot longer. Another one of the innovations that we've been testing, and if we see good results, that'll become the, the standard. And then one of the things we have to remember is that even though you used a high return on investment approach, there are still those areas in the city where the streets are bad enough that we need to make sure that we ensure that they continue to be safe and travelable. So we put a significant amount of our program into mitigating those streets that need to be taken care of, short of a full replacement, but still putting in some, some treatments that make them travelable and, and provide additional life to that asset. When you look at this year's funding, how it's broken out by district, what we try to do is to select the appropriate types of, of treatments, and that's driven by the, the type of roads that are in the city and their condition. We also look to try to even out the investment across the network, and it's not just an artificial, so much funding into each district. We look at the actual needs defined by the types of roads and the age of the roads, and we try to put, invest in approximately the same amount of percentage of the, of the paved network in, in each of the districts. So as you can see, it varies somewhere between 14.3% and 18%. So it's not an exact fit, but like I say, it is driven by the actual needs in the city. This is a chart that shows the various types of treatments, the amounts for those treatments by district. When you look at the new approach that, that we're, the city has been using, in 2010, there were much fewer road lane miles being maintained. 2011, it bumped up a little bit to 72 lane miles while we were trying to get the program underway. And then as you can see, it ramps up the number of lane miles to two high years in 2016 and 17, when we were really using a lot of the, going after the low-hanging fruit, which is the thermal crack repairs and the crack seal that we put on the streets. And we were going from 72 lane miles to 813 lane miles. We've kind of settled it out down a little bit now, more typical, because of that low-hanging fruit was an opportunity that came at some point in about seven, eight, nine years when those treatments have to be done again, you'll see a similar kind of a spike in terms of lane miles. But as you can see, we're going somewhere closer to 500 lane miles than, than 72 lane miles a year. And that, that's because we're using our money much more with a higher emphasis on return on investment, and it also reflects the, the council's... And it also reflects the council's emphasis on putting... making this a high priority budget item. Even to the point of when the Hyatt was sold here a few years back, some of those proceeds were taken and invested back into the road system. So this is a report card that the mayor had asked for a couple of years ago. If you look at the black line, that shows the old approach. If you look at it in terms of asset value, the asset value was declining. No surprise there, because even though you're putting money into the system, the system is degrading at a higher rate than the amount of money that you can put into it. So we were losing money each year on our asset value. That's the black line. By taking this new approach, now you see the red line and the yellow line was without the Hyatt infusion in the 17, 18 period. But that red line is really more representative of what we actually did. And as you can see, we made some gains, especially as we addressed the low-hanging fruit. And now we seem to be holding kind of status quo. We're not losing ground. We're kind of holding ground. And as you can see, with the budgeted amount, which has increased over the $8 million a year that we used to do, we might... you might even say that we're gaining a little ground. So in terms of asset value, which is one measure of the success of the program, we've improved dramatically over the old approach that we were using, which is shown by the black lines. Similarly, another approach is looking at the remaining acceptable service life. How many years you have left in the network of roads you have. And we express that in lane mile years. And again, you see the black line under the old approach declining. With the new approach, you can see the red and gold lines infusing a higher level of life into the system, with it holding steady at the $8 million a year and even gaining with the new budget amounts that council has approved. And as you can see from this starting point, if we were to revert back to the old approach, it would decline in about the same slope as a solid black line. And as you would expect with the remaining service life, you're going to... by not going with the first... with the worst first, you're going to see treatments applied to the newer streets to preserve that treatment. So it's similar to the idea of if you've got new siding on your house. To keep it new, you'd keep it painted. Otherwise, you wait until it gets old and fails, and then you re-side your house. That's kind of the approach that we're taking with our streets. We're trying to preserve those assets, which are in better condition. It has a much higher return on investment that way. But what you have is, you have an amount of streets that fall below an acceptable service level. And that's why we have to also be aware of the need to mitigate those worst streets. And when we talked about our approach, which was to try to maximize return on investment, we also have to be aware that we have to also... that we need to invest money in keeping those worst streets travelable and safe. There is a map that will be on the... if it's not already, on the city's website that shows which particular streets that we're talking about and what kinds of treatments that they'll receive. And some of these lines show, for example, pavement joint crack seal and then all the way up to ultra-thin resurfacing. And so there's a variety of different treatments. And as you can see, they're kind of spread throughout the district. And this map and a detailed list, street by street, is available on the city's website. So with that, I'm ready to stand for any questions you might have.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Alan. Could you go back to slide six, please? I have a question about the failed crosswalk expense in District Four. The crosswalk replacement of $59,000. Was that a construction issue or a design issue? I mean, what's going on with that? Do we get a credit back because of the failed crosswalk replacement?
It's a combination of... it's still being somewhat of a pilot effort. We're looking for those areas that have failed crosswalks. They're about the same vintage, about the same kind of construction. We noticed that we're seeing a lot of failures. And so this is an area that absolutely does need to have these crosswalks repaired. They're the standard of the bricks crosswalks. But it also is a effort for us to get a good evaluation about whether this is a... should become the standard going on.
Okay, so it wasn't related to an existing or a new project? It was an old one that's just...
The standards that were when we were first introducing the idea of brick crosswalks as the standard. Instead of painted.
My understanding is the issue simply brick crosswalks are... tend to have some problems when we snowplow and the plow catches the brick, tears it up.
That is absolutely true, yes.
The stamped concrete obviously won't have the same issue.
Correct, sir.
And so now, when we build streets, we're not using the brick.
Well, we're going to check to see. We are experimenting. We've actually got some new construction that we've put the stamped concrete down on. We want to make sure that we aren't jumping ahead too quickly. But we believe that this is a much better option for us than the more traditional brick sidewalk. Yes, sir.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Alan, could you look up for me? Because I think that is relatively new installation, the Councilmember Frye's point, at Pawnee and Seneca and... or Pawnee and Meridian and... or both of the Seneca installation and the one on Meridian. I think were both relatively new.
As far as stamped concrete?
No, as far as the bricks that were put in there and the snowplow started pulling them up.
Oh, you mean even new?
Yes, because I've heard about those for about five years. As soon as we put it in there, I don't think it was long after the snowplow started hitting the bricks and pulling them up. So Councilmember Frye's question was, is that a new installation or an older? I still think it was relatively new installation.
I think it's like what the mayor had said, which is it's a problem that you have with the actual... having a brick sidewalk, that you're going to catch those bricks with the snowplows more just by the fact that the kind of sidewalk that they are made up of individual bricks.
As we discussed earlier, I got a pretty big stack of letters here. And the number one issue with constituents of my district is their residential streets. They don't understand the process that we're following right now. They don't like the cosmetics of the crack and seal. Some people are telling me it's bumpy. You're saying it shouldn't be that way. So could you help better explain that? Because people just don't understand what's going on. The emails I get constantly are, you're making our road worse than what it was. So I don't know if that's being caught in between the phases or... Help us better understand what's going on.
Well, if I could take them, you know, as far as the crack seal's concerned, not aware of any worsening ride that you get out of crack seal. They're pretty close to at grade. I mean, it's mostly aesthetic. People see... don't see the hairline cracks that the crack seal is applied to. They think they have a fairly good neighborhood street in particular. And then we come out there and we use this black material that really emphasizes where those cracks are. And the aesthetics are... really take a hit in terms of what the street looks like. We understand that. We try to be judicious in the use of our crack seals so we don't overcrack. So we did that in the first year that we were doing it. But what I can say is that when you put a crack seal down on a road, you add decades of life to that street. Even though you do have a sacrifice in terms of the aesthetics, how it looks, you are adding so much to the life of that street. And this really goes to our approach, which is to make sure that we use our dollars in a way that adds the highest value and life to our system. And there's some kind of give or take... or there's a cost to that, which in the case of crack seal, is aesthetics. But if the... what the aesthetics... lack of aesthetics do buy is a very much longer-lived road, which is what the approach we're trying to take. Now, we've been responding to people and explaining this to them. And a lot of people, once we explain the amount of life that you get out of a street, they see... that seems to... they seem to appreciate that. It's a move... or it's a method that we use to extend the life of streets. In terms of ride, if I could switch gears here, ride... some of those complaints, and we get them too, it's from the patch repairs that we make. And we used to make those just freestanding, patch repairs. We go in there and cut out rectangles and squares in particular areas where the pavement had failed and make repairs there. And starting some time ago, particularly driven by our experience on 21st Out West, 21st Street, what we've done is since then is adopted a standard where, after we make those patch repairs, the ride is rougher. Now we go over it later with a seal coat. And that seal coat evens things out, so the ride is much better. It also protects the edges of those patches. And so that has become the standard now. Now, there still will be times when you see patches, when we're going in and doing an isolated fix in a place not as part of our pavement program repairs. And also, we go in and make patches on concrete. And so there are still concrete patches that you'll see. But for the most part, when you're talking about asphalt patches, we now have changed our standard to put that seal coat over those patches so that the ride is better. And we think that that's going to do a better job. Now, there is still a lag time between the time we do those patches and we come back, in some cases, the next spring and do the seal coat. We're trying to reduce the number of those streets that have to wait the whole season to the next year. By coming to you so early this year with this package, hopefully, if we get the bids out earlier, we're going to be able to reduce the number of those streets that are going to have to wait until the following spring to be coated.
Okay. So a lot of those issues you talk about, where we're working on it in the fall and we come back in the spring, I get a lot of feedback that then moisture's getting in there and it just washes out whatever you've put in the chuck hole. And then it's... when you're sealing it the next year, everything's washed out of there. So is that a problem? Because that's something I hear a lot about.
Well, pothole repairs, that is a problem. We go out and we do pothole repairs. We do about 75,000 pothole repairs a year. And that's to keep those worst streets mitigated so that they're safe and travelable. And that is a concern. What you'll see is, particularly if you get some weather, some freezing and thawing, and even heat, those potholes will get beat out. We have to go back and reapply pothole repairs. So your constituents who make that observation are absolutely right. As far as those rectangular patches that we go in ahead of the paving, not so much. They're a permanent repair. And if not for the appearance and the rougher ride, that would probably be the final repair for those roads. But like I mentioned, what we're doing is we're enhancing that treatment by putting a seal coat over the... or a coat over those patches. And sometimes in the following year. We've put the signs up that says, you know, the next stage, phase is coming. And it seems to have helped some people kind of get the idea that this isn't the end of it. We're coming back. But even that, we want to reduce by, like I say, getting this to you folks so early in the year so that we have a better chance of getting more favorable bid timing for the... for these repairs.
Another issue that's coming up a lot on Nextdoor, and I'm getting a lot of mail and messages about it, is the Pawnee Strip from 119th to 135th. I know you've heard my story several times. Five years ago, my daughter's bus run off the road because there's no curb or shoulder there. We're repairing it now. Can you go through and explain to us what repairs we're doing now? And then what plan we have next year to redo that and widen it so that we don't have any other accidents there?
Well, you're absolutely right. The plan is, is to make it a safer road. Because of the kind of the drop-off, if you will, on both sides of the road and the lack of a curb, it results in the kinds of accidents that you've described. And so what we're doing is we're widening that road. We're going to put a shoulder on one side and a curb on the other. And hopefully, what that will do is make that a safer stretch of road. But it's going to take us a little while to get to that point for it to be programmed into the CIP. In the meantime, what we want to do is to try to make that road better in terms of its ride. We did go in and we made a bunch of patches, but the patches were not... they were... when we said we wanted to temporarily patch that road, it was kind of emphasized on the temporary, unfortunately. So we are going back in and improving those patches to make them a better patch for the life of the time between now and when that street is redone with the improvements that I described.
If I could just supplement what Alan mentioned. First of all, that additional work has been authorized. That's a little over $50,000. So we're trying to be diligent in terms of addressing that issue, Vice Mayor. And then also, Alan didn't talk about the timing. We've already led a contract for the design of the improvements. And I believe that they're... that construction will start next year, if I remember correctly. And that's the way it's reflected in the CIP.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. And Bob, can you explain exactly what the enhancement's going to be? Aren't we doing a curb on one side and...
And a shoulder on the other side?
Yep, yep. Okay. One other question, and I'll leave you alone. I want to know whenever... it looks like the matrix for how we're going to split up all the road money is per district. So geographically, you look at District Four, it's about twice the size of the other districts. You look at Districts Five and you look at Two, and that's relatively new infrastructure. So I'm curious, what other matrix are we using, other than just districts to divide up the money?
We try to even out the percentage of the network that we're addressing. So as you can see, we're pretty close. We're between 18 and... excuse me, between... yeah, 18 and 14.3% of the network in each of the districts. So we're doing about the same number of percentage of the total network in each of the districts. But it's not going to come out easy even, because we're not looking just at an artificial measure of how much, you know, split it up evenly among the districts. We are really trying to be more condition and age-driven. And so that's why you see some of the differences between the different districts, because there are differences in need. There are some roads that are older and some of the older part of town. And so that's an emphasis on mitigation, for example. There are some streets that are really kind of new streets. And so we look at preservative seals in those sorts of areas. So we look for the kinds of opportunities that are available to us across the city. We try to get somewhat close in terms of a percentage of network, but you're not going to see it artificially divided up by district. It really is, first and foremost, by the types of needs that we have out there.
Thank you, Alan. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Alan, one question and then just to the Vice Mayor's point, the DuraPatch, which you know I have a love-hate relationship with. If some of those that had less tar, if that is what it is, those are the ones that tend to have the material come out more. Because there's a few where I told you about on Madison that are still there. They still look great. They've actually evened out now, where they had way more tar than some of the other ones. So that might be one thing that we could look at, just add in more to it. The other thing is also to the Vice Mayor's point, just can you explain more about what we're doing for those worst off roads? Because I hear concerns about that too. Why are we doing this to streets that don't really need help? And we have these terrible streets over here. So could you explain more about that?
Yes, sir. It's not intuitive. You'd think, and what has been the practice until recently for not only the city but most of the nation, is you take care of your worst streets first. And that has been a practice that's been in place. The problem with that is if you've got the amount of streets that you're investing in, if those... if that amount is much less than the degradation of your system, you find yourself falling farther and farther behind. And the approach that we had been using up until 2012, 2011, got us in the place that we are today by using that worst-first approach. What we found instead was, if you protect those streets that are in good condition, it's really inexpensive to keep those streets new. But what that does is it neglects, if you will, the worst of the streets, particularly in some of the older neighborhoods where the streets have been in place for a while. And that's why we take a significant amount of our OP-3 funding and invest it in mitigation, which is to keep the street travelable and safe. Doesn't look as good, but it is a good viable street. With the idea that eventually, if we catch up, if we can get some breathing room doing what we're doing, then we can, with the money that we save, we can actually invest in full replacement of those streets. That's the long-range goal that we're trying to get to.
If I could, Mayor, if I could supplement that. If we could go to the slide that shows our expenditures?
Expenditures?
Yeah, expenditures.
Do I have a slide that has expenditures? Oh, this slide?
No. Over time.
Oh, you mean lane miles?
No. We have one that showed how much we're spending.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right.
If you stay here for a second, what we're doing is we're increasing the amount of money up to $18 million, if I remember correctly, annually. That was what I was looking for. That will allow us to stabilize the system. And when we first brought this to the council, we were most concerned about the black lines and the trend, if we continue to follow the approach we're taking. At some point, we'll need to engage the council in discussion about money additional to at 18 for reconstruction projects, to take care of the worst. And so what we wanted to do is stabilize the system and get some sustainability going forward. And then we needed to take... we knew we would have to supplement that to take care of the worst streets. And that's, again, an issue that we'll have to address going forward in our capital planning.
Councilmember Claycomb?
I have a follow-up question to that then. So we are doing some reconstruction at this point.
It's mostly mitigation. When I say reconstruction or rehabilitation, what I mean is you grind off the top layer of the road and either heat it up or replace it. And it is, in all intents and purposes, a new road. Grind and overlay, mill and overlay, that kind of a process. We're not doing any of that right now. I mean, on a spot-by-spot basis. But our approach really is... But our approach really is in preserving the streets that we have and making those fixes that will give life and value over some period of time.
Yeah, and I-
With the exception, and I know Alan didn't mean to convey it this way. We are reconstructing entire roadways, but most of those are capacity issues where we're expanding the roadway.
Yeah, and so if we have a road right now that fails, you know, it's in such bad shape, do we go in and do some repairs?
Repairs, yes. The mayor's right. If we're going from a two-lane road to a three-lane road, absolutely, we're going to do the whole, we're going to do a whole block, intersection to intersection, and we employ those kinds of methods. But what you'll see is a road that fails, for example. We'll try to, if it's so far gone, we'll mitigate it to keep it in good shape. And that cost of mitigation, applied over and over again, is actually pretty cost-effective. But it looks bad, and it maybe doesn't ride so good. With the idea that as it rises up in the priority list, then we can do those square patches that you see on the different places on the road and then come later on with a coat. And that's about as close as we get to improving a road close to new. It rides like new, it looks like new, but it doesn't last as long as new. And so we recognize that.
Thank you.
We still haven't gone out for public comment. So do we have any questions before we go out to public comment? Thank you. So now we'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the bench for discussion. Councilmember Clint Denon?
Thanks, Mayor. Back in two thousand eleven, I think, is when I actually came on this council. And probably one of the primary things that I was hearing as a council member were the conditions of roads in southeast Wichita. But not even there, all over. We were really hemorrhaging. Our roads were, the money was not going as far as it needed. I don't know if we all remember back then, but there were not nearly the funds that we have today to do some of the work that we're doing. And the approach that the council took at that time was, I think, wise. And I think many of the improvements that you're seeing today, you're seeing because of that. I know that this approach, for a lot of people, a lot of people like a brand-new road. But if we don't take this approach, you're going to see some of the roads that we're trying to hold on, that we're trying to extend so we can get to them. You're going to see dirt streets again because some of those roads were horrible. My hope is that, Mr. Manager, this has kind of been a form of a question to you. My hope is that in the future, as we start to pay off Kellogg and as Kellogg, you know, that debt is retired and we have sales tax money available for our roads and our streets, that we're going to be able to start investing even more into boosting some of those roads that we're doing some of those treatments on. Do you have anything that you can add to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, the current CIP, the one that you just approved, actually shows some of that money starting to shift into residential streets. And that's how we get up to the eighteen and a half million dollars by the end of that CIP, and that's just an annual amount. It's anticipated that that will either level off or continue to rise. Probably we'll still need to talk about the supplemental program to be able to deal with the worst streets.
Sure. Well, I think we have a bright future. We've really boosted over the last eight years the amount of money that we're putting into road maintenance. We're going to catch up. You know, catching up doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't happen over eight years, obviously. But we really are taking a focused approach to this. So I appreciate, Alan, when you came on board, the innovative approaches that you brought to this. We've experimented with a lot of different things. And I think some of the reasons why some people were upset is because we were pilot project, doing some pilot projects on some roads. And we found out some worked and some didn't. But this really is the best approach, I think, to get us where we need to be. So thank you for your innovative approach and thanks for staff for everything you do.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will shut up after this as well. But one quick question. It may not be completely connected to this, but I am curious to know, I know that unpaved roads, you need some form of special assessment, but I would like to know how much it would cost to pave all of our unpaved roads. Because I know that we have seven that I continue to hear about all the time. But I would like to know what that cost would be and then maybe some options to kind of do that.
I believe a few years ago, we prepared that, a report, a pretty detailed report on that. So we'll go ahead and provide you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I want to also add, and I love having this chart up there because instead of just, you know, sometimes all of us trying to assess the road conditions on our own because we don't like the look of it, this gives you quantitative data that shows you exactly where we're at. And we've obviously moved the needle quite a bit in terms of where we were heading over the last four or five years to where we are today. Part of that was a bump because of the Hyatt funds. Certainly, it made a difference and helped us. But part of that is what Councilmember Clint Denon said. We looked at a lot of different strategies and figured out what worked best so that we can save the assets that we have in place. And part of it was a policy decision to quit falling further behind. And so I appreciate it and happy to make the motion to take the staff-recommended action.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Vendor selection for computer hardware.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Mike made a CIO for the city. Before you today for an RFP for computer hardware. Distributed, went through the RFP process, staff screening, consistent with normal RFPs that we do. Staff from IT, finance, and law reviewed and evaluated the proposals. And based on the RFP, High Touch Technologies was recommended in its ability to meet the requirements of the proposal. High Touch also provided us with the previous contract. High Touch's proposal was competitively priced. A reseller we use, we're consistent on Dell. That keeps our resources in terms of support and how much we have to spend human resource. As we're consistent in that process, it helps to reduce those. As a reseller for Dell, the company can ensure same-day shipping, which is very important to us, being able to get some of our departments, especially if things are actually broken, we can get those. We do have spares, but get those in place quickly. This will be a five-year contract with one-year renewal options. High Touch provides, obviously, online and telephone support. And being local also provides us the ability to go down and pick up, which is very important for us if needed. Computer hardware costs well within operating budgets. You see the first year, second, out through five years. These costs, as you can imagine, especially you get into the third, fourth, and fifth year costs, we suspect that we can reduce those. We're doing some different things in terms of the manager's push, right, to look at innovative ways to think about how we replace things. So instead of replacing PCs, we're looking at replacing drives, just the hard drives inside, upgrading the RAM, the RAM memory. A lot of times what this does is it provides enough compute power for staff to be able to do the work that they need to do. But as you can imagine, it really drives the cost down. So we will continue that process throughout this, throughout the life of this company. So the point is, we hope to drive down some of these costs. So as our recommendation, City Council approved the contract and authorized the necessary signatures, I will obviously stand for any questions that you might have on this exciting topic. Not quite-
Riveting, riveting topic. No questions? Can't imagine. After all of that last agenda item, we still have things to say? We'll go out to the public. Anyone want to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. If there's no other discussion, I move that we take staff-recommended action.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Public exigency for modifications to the water treatment plant disinfection process.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. The item before you this morning is a public exigency for modifications to the water treatment plant disinfection process, specifically the process controls for the plant's ammonia and chlorine dosing system. The project is located on the main campus of the water treatment plant on the east side between the art museum and the water treatment plant north of Museum Boulevard. You'll notice the yellow square on the slide before you shows some structures there. Those are in place and house some of the current controls. The process control system for chlorine and ammonia basically automates the correct dose for disinfection for the water. With the current system in place, when it's run in automatic mode, those disinfectant dosages can be inconsistent. And this is due to inaccurate process-controlled data resulting from aged equipments and pipes in the system. It's important to note here that staff's expertise and KDHE have worked very closely together to put a manual workaround in place. And we're confident that this will continue to maintain superior water quality as well as furnishing KDHE with the needed data that they record to maintain compliance. That said, it is staff's desire and KDHE's directive to move forward with the more permanent fix. And the approach that's laid out under the public exigency meets KDHE's expectations. And so the project will involve determining optimized sample and analyzer locations based upon industry-best practices for this type of system. It will involve installing new analyzers at those optimized locations with dedicated piping. This is important because the current system includes some old piping that is tied into other systems with some valving, and that poses a risk of getting some unwanted water from other processes back into the analysis. And so this will take care of that issue as well. And we will also construct a temporary enclosure to protect the analyzers and data transferring equipment from the outdoor environment. The city manager approved work to proceed under public exigency in accordance with city ordinance on September twentieth, twenty nineteen. Funding in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars is available in the adopted twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program. At this time, staff requests three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design, construction, and city oversight of the project. City staff met with four qualified contractors for this project, and CAS Constructors provided the lowest not-to-exceed cost of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. And with that, I'd like to recommend that the council affirm and ratify the city manager's public exigency approval, approve the contract with CAS Constructors to carry out the work, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions? Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just, could you speak to the person you're recommending? There's been some concern in public about low cost and what that really means as far as quality. It's a company that you believe could deliver the quality to make sure our water system is safe.
Absolutely, and that was the first step that we took in the process. You know, we were going to handle this under the public exigencies. We needed to make sure that we got, you know, the scope of work and the detail and the requirements that KDHE needs and that staff desires in front of the right folks that could provide the work. And so the four outfits that we met with, we're all qualified contractors. We have a high level of confidence in CAS Constructors. They've provided services on past city projects, and they did provide the lowest cost also. But we did make sure that they were the qualified outfit, and we're confident with them moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, I would move that we take the recommended action as just laid out.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Economic development grant to KVC Health Systems.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council, Scott Rigby, City Manager's office. Today, we're here to talk a little bit about KVC Health Systems. They provide treatment, emotional and substance-of-use services for youth ages six to eighteen. Currently, patients and family members travel to the KC metro area or other parts of the state to receive treatment for this. Currently, last year, I believe they had seven hundred or currently have seven hundred in treatment. They have identified a new location to open here in Wichita to allow family members and individuals to receive treatment here locally. It is located at fifteen oh seven West Twenty-first Street. I'll show you a picture here in a minute. It would be a fifty-four-bed facility. This is the location. It's a former healthcare facility. They're going through the renovation process right now to bring that up to utilization. The new facility would have the capacity to treat up to twenty-eight hundred patients annually. That allows parents and family members, as I previously said, to stay close to home while receiving treatment. KVC is close to receiving full funding necessary to have the best psychiatric and neuroscience care available in Wichita region. At this time, though, KVC is requesting financial assistance for the project to have full operation. Part of the project includes the creation of new jobs, one hundred and twenty new jobs with an average wage of forty-two thousand, five hundred. In addition, KVC will invest approximately seven million dollars in renovations to the facility. We did do a cost benefit or benefit-to-cost analysis for the funding request of seventy-five thousand dollars. This one-time grant request will be funded out of the city council's community benefit allocation. When WSU did the analysis, it generated a one point two four to one, which is technically below our one point three typical threshold. However, our economic development guidelines provide options for the council to consider other motivating factors. One of them would be providing employment in one of our key areas, which is healthcare, as well as providing key social services to the community and/or other decision points that the council feels worthwhile. So based on those other characteristics of providing employment within healthcare and providing needed services that currently aren't available in the Wichita region, staff is supportive of their request and request and is recommending that the city council approve the grant award of seventy-five thousand dollars to KVC Health Systems. Justin White, actually, I think he's a small board for Wichita State Shockers, but he's also serving as executive director. He's here and can answer questions as well as I can.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor.
Can you tell me a little bit more about this economic development grant? Have we gave this grant out before?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I know council has considered other possibilities in the past for grant awards. This one is unique for a healthcare facility.
So is it in our policy, like, in any healthcare facility? Can apply for this, or?
I'm going to ask the C manager to weigh on this.
I think this is a good cause, but I have a feeling we've just created some. Haven't we just invented a grant for this to be able to donate the money to the children's hospital?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the city council has an allocation of two hundred thousand dollars in its budget for community partnerships. And at the time the council approved that, they wanted some flexibility, so there were no specific guidelines that were implemented. We have worked through this issue and have decided that probably the best, our guidance to you is as you allocate funds from that two hundred thousand dollars. And Scott's right, there have been other requests, but none of them have ever been brought to the bench by a council member. So anyway, our recommendation is you treat it like an economic development project. You go ahead and you look at the return on investment and the community benefit. Ultimately, you have to decide what rules you want to follow. But our recommendation is to- is to take this approach. There's another project that's behind this that has come forward for funds. I've been working with their staff to do the similar analysis, and they're providing similar information.
Okay, is that the passageways?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I brought that forth to you. You stated no one had brought anything else, so.
No, I'm sorry.
I brought it, okay.
No, I meant previously, in previous years.
Okay, okay. I'm open to looking at this kind of stuff. I just want to make sure that we have some kind of policy and some kind of direction before we open up the checkbook. KVC, obviously, is a very, very worthy, something in need, but passageway, taking care of homeless vets is too, so I just want to make sure that we're keeping open eyes with everyone and treating them all equally, okay? Thanks.
Councilmember Claycomb.
And if I read the agenda report properly, our economic development policy provides this, I mean, it's in our policy. We have exceptions for businesses or nonprofits that provide a unique community benefit.
Mayor, Councilmember Claycomb, that's correct.
Okay, so that's in our policy.
It's in our policy as well as it provides key employment within some of our key industries, which is healthcare is one of those.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Frye.
Thanks, Mayor. But to Councilmember Claycomb's point, I just, but we don't have anything in writing that says you have to meet this threshold, you're getting this amount of money. It's still pretty ambiguous, isn't it?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's our intent in bringing this forward to you that you are setting a precedent in that you want to follow our economic development guidelines, and if you vary, you know, my recommendation is you vary it by a small amount. Now, ultimately, you can make that decision, but this is, we tried to get as close to the 1.3 as we could. The original request was for $100,000, but that did not get us close to the 1.3. And so, our recommendation of the $75,000 would get you to the 1.24, and it's up to the council then to decide if that's appropriate or not. But instead of trying to, because there were so many, it was very difficult to come up with a policy that didn't open the door for all kinds of projects, and you only have 200,000. So, really, the first two, couple of projects in the pipeline would be the ones that would benefit, and that, and it would be hard to judge community benefit. So, our recommendation is to use your economic development standards in judging these projects.
So, would this work negatively against someone like Passageways that's providing, or I don't know what kind of math you'd look at there, or maybe the rate they're putting people back to work at, or?
No, again, trying to use the model that we do for all projects. So, we're looking at their capital investment, which I think is going to be significant for them, as well as job creation, and they have a number of jobs that are, a number of individuals will be in support and providing support services to veterans. Again, I don't have their information. I've requested it, had conversation with them. When we get it, we'll run it through the WSU model, and we'll try to do the same thing for Passageways that we've done for KVC.
I think it's a step in the right direction. I just want to make sure we're following a policy, and like you said, we are setting precedent today if we get this approved, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to reiterate and not lose sight of the fact that KVC, from an economic development standpoint, is providing 120 new jobs and a $7 million capital investment. And if you look at it just from that prism, getting close to that 1.33 is commendable considering there is no property tax abatement, there's no sales tax generation, they're doing something in providing a unique community benefit. I'm a big supporter of Passageways as well, but looking at this from the economic development protocol or policy that we have, we're over the 1.1, which is a fantastic number, but from the main point of being close to the 1.33 is even better. So, I think this is the right way to approach a request like this, and I'm certainly approving.
All right. If there's no other questions, we still want to go out to the public, I believe.
Sure.
So, we'll take it out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also talk about KVC and the benefit to the city, working in group homes as I did for years. We were forced to go to a Good Shepherd or another organization and have these young people go out to Hays, Kansas, or Kansas City, and oftentimes, they would call parents the day of and say, "We need you to come pick your kid up." And a lot of folks can't drive five hours to Hays, and that's there and back, so a 10-hour drive, basically, or going to Kansas City. And this, having this here in Wichita, a lot of our kids from Wichita were going to these places. So, one of the great benefits for parents and the young people who might need this is they're in town, and it allows parents to visit or pick up their kids in a way that's not taking them a full day of work off to go pick them up. So, I think that in itself is also a benefit, and looking forward to supporting this.
So, totally agree with what you just said. There are tons of benefits in having KVC in our city. There's no question that they're going to serve a population that we have not had the ability to serve in the past, and, but I do appreciate what the Vice Mayor is saying. Let's build a set of parameters that don't open us up, because there's 5,500 roughly nonprofit agencies in this city that are, for the most part, all doing pretty good work, and so how do we judge which one is doing better work than the others? And I think this set of guidelines will help us. There's no perfect set of rules that gets us there. If there were, we would just simply have rules in place, and none of us would be needed. And the reality is, we have to look at all of the information and then formulate our decision based on all of that information, but these guidelines, I believe, will help get us there. Are they perfect? Yeah, maybe not, but I think it's a good start. Will they be revised a year from now? Maybe. And that's typically how all of our policies are. I mean, they're working, living documents, and I think this points us in the right direction. I agree with both the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Frye. Passageways is another group that's doing really good things and making investments, and it's going to show up in the way that we eventually look at those documents and bring those forward. But I think we're going in the right direction, so. Councilmember Tuttle, and then we'll turn it over to Councilmember Claycomb, who's been really working on this for quite some time, even though this impacts all of us in the city. I think she certainly deserves the opportunity to have the last word and potentially a motion. So, Councilmember Tuttle.
I just wanted to thank Justin White and KVC for bringing this much-needed resource to our community. The other reason I'm going to be supportive is that it's not something that isn't, you're not asking for operating funds because you can't meet a yearly budget, right? That wouldn't be a sustainable thing for us to do. It's something that's going to help you to open your doors and have a success in our community. So, thank you, and I'll be supportive.
And if there's no other questions or comments, we'll turn it over to Councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Justin White for being here today. Really appreciate, as Councilmember Tuttle said, KVC bringing this here. I also want to say that I appreciate staff for being able to find a way using our economic development model. I think that sets some good parameters and a good precedent for these projects coming forward, and I know that took a lot of effort because we worked on it for quite a long time. Just some things that I think people are probably aware of, but that make KVC a very special organization to bring here. Kansas youth suicides rose by more than 50% in a single year in the latest statistics we have, and the KDHG secretary said that every one of us has a role to play in helping mitigate that. Some of you may not know, but Sedgwick County Commission made a donation to this, so I think our grant shows partnership with Sedgwick County in this much-needed service. And so, as such, KVC provides really a unique community benefit, is aligned with the city's strategic plan, provides employment in healthcare, a target industry for us, and leverages other funding sources in the $7 million that they are raising. So, with that, I'd like to move that city council approve the award of $75,000 to KVC Health Systems.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
DER 2019-1 Unified Zoning Code Amendment, Renewable Energy.
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. I'm basically here to introduce Dave Yearout as part of the planning department staff that's been here since we moved over to the Ronald Reagan Building. In his previous jobs, he has developed and worked with wind and solar ordinances and resolutions in at least three different counties, and so while I was out of the country, he developed the proposed amendments that you see. These were presented to the county commission, and so, and they approved them, and so what you are seeing today is what was previously approved by the county commission, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Yearout.
Here in council, welcome. Dave Yearout with the planning staff. Before you today is the proposed amendments to the Unified Zoning Code regarding renewable energy. Briefly, the origin of these amendments started with a directive from the county commissioners to staff to pursue analysis of how we address renewable energy development within Sedgwick County particularly, and that was followed, well, that was done in January, followed by a moratorium resolution passed by the county commissioners on all applications regarding renewable energy on a commercial scale that was passed in February 6th of this year. We conducted extensive research and a massive amount of discussion with numerous people, including, there was a public forum sponsored by the county held at the county facilities out on 21st Street in the end of March. The planning commission held public hearings on proposed amendments in June, both on June 6th and on June 20th. There were citizens that spoke regarding everything that was on the table. Most of those citizens were concerned about the introduction of wind, large commercial wind facilities being brought into Sedgwick County, were opposed to that, they were not opposed to solar facilities. In fact, some of the people that spoke said they had no problem with solar, so. The moratorium was extended until November so that these amendments could be completed, but the county commissioners on the 21st of August did approve the, by unanimous vote, the amendments to the zoning regulations and also to the comprehensive plan. Within the zoning regulations, it's important to note, currently, there are, by right, the ability to establish solar facilities and wind facilities as accessory uses on individual properties. Individuals can do that, businesses can do that. There are height limits on wind facilities and some setback standards that will come into play. By right, solar is allowed, and there have been questions about larger solar facilities for those that are aware. I think Mays High School has got a solar facility that they built around the school, was not in our regulations. I understand Derby is currently doing the same thing with some solar facilities. They're using that to supplement power needs, but also as an educational opportunity within the school curriculum. Individuals that want to do that kind of thing on their own private property can do that by conditional use if they are not able to meet the standards that currently exist in the zoning regulations. The proposed amendments are to establish a provision that prohibits the large wind energy conversion systems, commonly known as wind farms. These are very large facilities, and the conclusion that we'll talk about in the comp plan was that after analysis, it was determined through the planning commission discussion that these were probably incompatible with the aviation industry that exists within the community. There was also a lot of public opposition to these facilities, particularly in the rural areas. The large wind facilities do take a large land area to develop. These are not something that are small in area, and we are talking only about the utility scale facilities. There are, within the proposed amendments, specific standards regarding solar facilities that will need to be submitted to support the application. There are some very specific issues regarding concerns around airport facilities and landing strips. Within the industry, there is called what's a solar glare hazard analysis, or as the industry calls it, a glaring glint analysis that's done. It's part of what they normally will do on any facility that they are proposing, so that is something that's already established. We're simply asking that that documentation be provided along with the application that will address the solar impacts that might be occurring on the large solar facilities. There are certain other site standards that are established within the draft amendments concerning height of the overall facilities, some setback issues. We've got perimeters fencing. There's also a requirement where we talk about mitigation plans of all other impacts, because there had been discussions about potential impacts on public infrastructure, social economic issues, concerns about impacts that may have on like small cities and their growth ability. All those kind of things are needs to be addressed within what needs to be submitted. We did do an analysis, and we show this map only just so you can kind of see, were concerns about the impacts that we would have around airport facilities. This is a map that shows all of the known, recognized airports, facilities that exist and landing strips that are occurring within Sedgwick County, and the blue circles are essentially a one-mile radius. Those areas, any solar facility that's proposed within that area will require FAA to sign off as part of their approval process. That documentation will need to be provided if a large solar commercial facility is proposed. I can show you, we did that, and that's the five-mile radius around those airports for the wind impacts that, there had been studies showed that they can have impacts up to five miles around airport facilities, primarily the smaller airports. But you can see there was not a lot of area left within Sedgwick County, which is part of the reason why the planning commission had concluded within their recommendations to recommend that the wind facilities be prohibited within the county. The, as I said, the county commission has approved that. There are other rules and regulations in effect, including the airport hazard regulations that are supplementing kind of what's being said, and we, I will tell you that there was discussions with McConnell officials who were very supportive of everything going on with regarding the renewable energy regulations and standards that we were presenting. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have before you, the proposed ordinance that would supplement or would conclude the recommendation or the amendments to the Unified Zoning Code as outlined, so.
One question that I have, and looking at that screen that's up there right now. In terms of solar energy, and I've heard of the issue, obviously, of the glare and that sort of thing, we also know that there are solar panels lining the Denver Airport. So, what we're also saying here is, this doesn't prohibit solar panels from lining our airport, they just have to meet the FAA approval.
Yes, yes.
So, so where?
There's actually larger solar panels at Indianapolis Airport.
Right, so.
Than what's at Denver, but yes, they are.
So, this isn't?
Permitted, those would be accessory, would not be zoning action at all.
Right, okay. The public hearing was on June 6th, so technically, we would not hold a public hearing here where So, I don't know if... hold a public hearing here where people, so I don't know if there's anyone even here that wants to comment. Is there any sense that we should suspend our rules? We'll just continue to go forward. I, I do have another question that I, I don't know that there's an, if anyone's even here to answer it. And talking to Cedric County, the, one of the issues that said came before them is there's a sense of urgency that we get these rules put in play because there are some renewable energy folks that want to build, and specifically, some solar panel opportunities in this area. Have you heard of that? Is there something in the pipeline?
Yes, we're fully aware that there are currently leases established and a company that is working to finalize their approach regarding a rather large solar facility, commercial facility in the western part of the county. Expected them to be here today. They indicated they probably would.
And they, and they kind of need these rules set in place before they can move their project forward?
Well, there is a, of course, the moratorium is still in effect, and they want to get that behind them. All their investors are wanting to make sure that all the dark clouds are gone. And they have been actively involved, engaged with us in evaluating and providing input on these documents as we go through. They did attend the public hearing, and they were at the County Commission action that was in August, so.
So I think the misperception after that June 6th hearing was that we were banning renewable energies, or Cedric County was banning renewable energies. And that is not the case. So they want, they want to encourage renewable energies, specifically solar. And I can't imagine in the city of Wichita that there would be, as you can see on the chart, there is no place to put a 400-foot-tall wind turbine. And so I, I don't think we're going to have pushback from folks that, that are upset that we banned 400-foot-tall wind turbines. And, you know, there's a reason why those wind farms need to be out in expansive, open parts of our state. And, but solar is a whole different category, and we want to continue to encourage solar panels. I would, I'd be happy if solar panels lined every street in Wichita and our airports and all of that. I, I think that's a great direction to go in terms of encouraging renewable energy. My wife and I gave financially to the project that's at the high school that she works at. And we, we love what they're doing out there in terms of a very large solar panel opportunity that's changing the way they use energy at Mays, and changing their cost system. And for them, it worked out financially really well because they got quite a bit of money donated for the infrastructure. So I, I, I think this does place us in a good position, and we need to go forward because of, you know, the, the project that's kind of hanging out there in terms of potentially building something in Cedric County. And so I, I think we're ready to move forward with this. Is there any other discussion? Go solar. I would move that we take the staff recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 6-1. Madam Clerk, next item?
DER 2019-1 Community Investments Plan Amendment Renewable Energy Policy Statement.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'll follow on. And this is the companion with the amendment to the zoning regulations. This just repeats the slide that showed you what we did. Within the comprehensive plan, the amendment that is approved establishes a new plan element that addresses renewable energy facilities. We recognize the importance of protecting rural development, protecting our aviation industry, and all the myriad of activities that occur within that. We are supportive of renewable energy, but we recognize the incompatibility of the wind energy systems, the conversion systems, but are acceptable to the solar facilities with, with standards. And I would add, within that, it talks about the recognition that as technologies change, as other information changes regarding all forms of renewable energy, the policies and the, the amendments that we just did are, can be brought on the table and adjusted and modified as needed to address those changes that we see within the industry over time. We will continue to monitor those things and expect that we will be seeing more information as, as time goes forward. And as I did indicate, yes, we are expecting another extensive application in the near future for a large solar facility that will be something new for a lot of us, because we're talking something that's a couple thousand acres in size. So it's a pretty good-sized facility. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, I don't have any either. I would move that we take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote.
Vice Mayor, would you cast your vote, please?
I did, and it's gone.
Okay. Can you tell me how you voted?
I voted yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes 6-1. Madam Clerk, next item?
So, Zone 2019-30 and CON 2019-28, City Zoning Amendment to Change Zoning From Multi-Family Residential and General Office to Limited Commercial and Conditional Use for a Vehicle and Equipment Sales Outdoor Located on the South Side of East 13th Street North, between North Market Street and North Broadway Avenue, 221 East 13th Street North and 215 East 13th Street North.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we defer this item until next week.
Okay. Defer it to next week, or is that?
Next week, one week, yeah.
Is that enough time? All right.
Yes.
So that was a motion to defer?
Yes.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to defer one week. Any questions? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Hearing and Issuance of Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds Yingling Aircraft, Inc.
Mayor and City Council Members, I'm Tim Goodpast here with the City's Office of Economic Development for the record. The item before you today is a request for the issuance of airport special facility revenue bonds for Yingling Aircraft. Yingling Aircraft was founded in 1964 for the sale of single-engine Cessna aircraft. It has developed over the years into a fixed base operator, providing fuel sales, aircraft sales and maintenance, parts sales, and design and installation of aircraft interiors. The company is located at Dwight D Eisenhower National Airport. On December 5th of 2017, the City Council approved a letter of intent not to exceed $3.5 million for the construction of a new 20,000-square-foot building at Eisenhower National Airport. The bonds are being used for a sales tax exemption only as the property is on Airport Authority ground, which is exempt from property tax abatement in perpetuity. The company is now requesting the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,050,000. The company demolished an existing building and built a new hangar for turbine maintenance, aircraft storage, and possible future office space. The company had 101 employees at the time and projects it would add 25 new jobs over the next five years at an average annual wage of $58,000. The area outlined in red is where Yingling is located. You can see on the south side, in the middle of this area, where the airport terminal is. And as you loop around the airport on Airport Road and continue back towards Harry, you would encounter where Yingling is located. These are some pictures of the new facility that Yingling has created. And these are a couple of interior photographs of that same facility. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to costs of 6.85 to 1, 3.42 to 1 for the city's general fund. Therefore, it's the staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Lynn Nichols, who is the chairman and CEO of Yingling Aircraft, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions at this point? This is a public hearing, so we'll go out. If there's no questions, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the counts on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. And Vice Mayor, before I hand it off to you, I do want to ask a question of Tim. So not often do we see this kind of return on investment. Obviously, this is pretty significant. What is the length of time that we typically calculate that return on investment at?
So we run them out either 10 or 20 years. What we're typically looking at capturing the benefits and the costs over a five-to-10-year period. When we look typically at the benefits, we're looking at what those jobs are being created and what wages are being paid in those first five years, because that's our typical measurement period at which we go back to the company and say, did you create the jobs? Are you paying the wages that you were predicting?
So help me out here then, when I see that, and we're looking at the one analysis of what, nearly a six-to-one return on investment?
Correct.
So if we run that out over 10 years, what we're saying is, the reality is, it's going to return six-to-one, or your investment's going to be paid off in six times as quick?
Correct. And that is because really, there's a substantial number of new jobs. There's a very high wage to those new jobs, and they're being created very early in that time period. So they're getting, they get captured for a longer time period.
Yeah. That, that's outstanding, because it really brings money back into, specifically our coffers, is how we do that analysis, on a very quickly, but, quick basis. So, thank you for the investment. So Vice Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And excited to see all the growth, Lynn. You guys are doing great things. I appreciated knowing you guys when I worked out at Cessna and, and seeing the growth. And you, you guys fill a need that Wichita needs, and, and I'm excited to see you're bringing the high-paying jobs. Hopefully, you're not having too much trouble filling those positions. So we're very excited, and want to go ahead and make the motion to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Airport Information Technology Capital Plan Wichita Dwight D Eisenhower National Airport.
Mayor and City Council, John Oswald, Airport Engineering and Planning Manager. Project to present to you today is the Airport Capital, Airport IT Capital Plan. The project is to find, hire a consultant to assist the airport and IT staff in developing an airport information technology 10-year capital plan. Major elements of the study would include baseline condition assessment, gap analysis, 10-year capital plan with emphasis on the first five years, both for cost and timing, and evaluating resources. Process we follow, we did follow the city Wichita administrative regulations, selecting a consultant, using city staffing, excuse me, using city staff through the screening and selection process. Faith group was selected from seven firms submitting qualifications. Airport and IT staff departments are teaming to represent the owner, which is the Airport Authority. Study cost is $140,105, all paid for from airport revenue funds. And it's the recommendation that the Wichita Airport Authority approve the project budget, approve the contract, and authorize the necessary signatures. Stand for questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, this is the public hearing. I take it, Jennifer, on this item. Was there another public hearing held?
There's not, there's not been a public hearing on this item.
So this would be the public hearing?
Can you open this up for comment?
Right. So we'll open it up. Anyone like to address the counts on this agenda item? We'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any discussion? Pretty simple. I'll take, I'll move we take the staff recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Any appointments, comments today?
I have an appointment.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I've got a message from Rebecca Robertson. She will be resigning from the Transport Advisory Board. However, I have a new appointment here today, Catherine McMurray. Thanks very much for coming in, Catherine. I'd like to appoint her to the Transit Advisory Board, and I'll send you her information.
My goodness, if she can sit through this.
It wasn't required to accept the appointment.
Well, thank you. That's outstanding. So, any other appointments? I would move that we accept the appointment as mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. I think that was to also give her a medal of some sort. Any other comments today? We cannot adjourn. We do have an executive session. Looks like they need it for about 15 minutes. Do we want to try and do that upstairs, or do we want to just wait and go to lunch afterwards? Let's do it down here. All right. I move that we go into executive session for 15 minutes. This is to receive information about a lawsuit pursuant to KSA 75-4319 for legal consultation with city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pending litigation. And for legal advice, this session is required to protect attorney-client privilege in the public interest. And we will return to these chambers no earlier than 11:50. That gives us a little time to get there. All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. All right. Motion passes unanimously.